You guys all ready?
Sure.
Let's get started. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council for October 23rd. Could we please have real call?
Presenting Officer Dean Bonderhead.
Present.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Here.
Councilmember Vince Heming.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Kebrik.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Keneese, present. In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is majority, therefore there is a quorum for this meeting.
Thank you. Would you please take a moment for personal reflection? And would all that are able, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The minutes were sent out. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second that motion.
Second from Nancy. Any further discussion? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Tonight, department presentation narrowed it down to just Cale, Personnel, Safety and Loss. I gave a wave on Renee since she was just coming back from a legal conference today.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. We'll get her rescheduled.
That's fine. Every year I come up here and I have great attendance in the audience, so I don't know if you guys plan that on purpose or what, but...
Pretty well gave it last night, didn't you?
Pretty much. Or yesterday, yeah. I mean, I had open enrollment meetings, like you all know, so just, I'll touch on that a little bit. Our health insurance vision, dental, that is going unchanged, no premiums passed on to employees. This is, I believe it's year number eight for us with no changes on to employees, so that's a great benefit, along with, I know, I think you guys passed tonight with compensation, salaries for 2025, if I remember right, but being able to add, you know, that compensation plus no changes to benefits is a nice incentive for our employees. So, you know, having those conversations yesterday with over 174 full-time employees that we have, and then also you add, I think it's another 125 part-time employees, that's not counting seasonal, so we're close to 300 employees for our staff of two, so we're doing pretty good from a personnel standpoint. And I know the question is, what about turnover? You know, we've hired 14 new employees this year, should be soon 16 if everything goes right, but out of those 16, everybody wants to know, are they all leaving or what's going on? We've had roughly nine retirements so far this year, looking for two more by the end of the year. Kind of in that age group, we're transitioning younger, but we're losing a lot of knowledge in those positions, either department heads or employees that have been here for 20, 30, sometimes 40, 45 years, so losing a lot of experience when that happens. One thing I wanted to touch on, and then I'll step away here, but we're really trying to focus more on training and different types of training. As you all know, I think you have a note from Bliss McKnight, we do a lot of different types of training. We cycle through harassment training, and there's different types of harassment that we talk to our employees about, but we conducted harassment training this year, confined space on the safety side of things, we utilize InSafe, since we are a part of the InSharp program, which is the Indiana Safety and Health Recognition Program, which is like the little brother to the VPP of the corporate worlds, so, and we're the only municipality in the state of Indiana that holds that designation. It's been going on since, I think, 2007, or 1997 or 98, I think, and we're the only city that's ever been a part of it and continue to be a part of it, so. And then we also utilized prior learning services for how to maximize our customer service, and that's just due to a lot of the different transition of new employees and from a public sector on how to handle certain situations and different difficult situations and how to talk through those. Most of our department heads have been here for many years and can deal with those things, but frontline, on the streets, receiving the phone calls, those are newer employees, so how do they handle those? So we've tried to address some of the trainings with those individuals, which is good. We decide to bring people in versus sending people out. We found that to be pretty budget friendly for us, and a lot of good feedback from our employees on that, so we may look at doing something like that in the near future for our staff to continue to do those types of things, so. Other than that, just a reminder, on November 2nd, touch a truck, so you're more than welcome to attend that, I believe it's, I hate to do this, but 9:30 to 11:00. 9:30 to 10 o'clock is no sirens, no horns, anything of that nature due to the noises and everything. Some people would rather not have that and can attend, so I just want to let everybody know that. That's all I have for you this evening. Short, sweet, to the point, all right?
Cale, thank you for providing that customer service training. I think that's excellent for the employees. They deal with the public every day, and, you know, as the old saying goes, the customer is always right, and we know that's not always the case, but how to handle those situations is important.
And I think you're right, because when we talk about the customer is always right, I think from our standpoint, the customer sometimes isn't that informed of what's going on, especially from right of ways and some of the things that we do, so to be able to have that verbiage ready to go and have that knowledge to talk to them about, hey, this is why we're doing it, helps lower that temper a little bit when it comes to those things, but you're absolutely right, Nancy. All right.
Any other questions for Cale? I know it's short, and he just touched a little bit on what he does. I can actually state, Cale gets involved in so many things as a coach within the organization and...
Yeah, I didn't want to...
He's really the head coach.
But also keeping, you didn't personally do this, but keeping the benefits flat for the employees, that's just unheard of, really, in this stand age, especially for eight years in a row.
Yeah, we've got a lot of little things that we do within our program that have, I call it the low-hanging fruit, that help us with saving some dollars here or there, and at the end of the year, makes a pretty big impact on what we can and can't do, so.
Thanks, Cale.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-14. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the second reading in full or by title only?
Make a motion to read on the second reading by title only, please, Mayor.
A motion from Paul.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would City Attorney please read ordinance number 2024-14 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-14, an ordinance levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the city of Jasper, Indiana for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
Second.
And a second from John. Further discussion?
Just to point out that the total advertised budget for 2025 is .9987 for the city of Jasper.
And when will we get the revised number?
The certified tax rate will probably come out December or January.
December or January?
Mm-hmm.
And that traditionally has been?
Lower than the advertised rate. Let's see, last year, our advertised rate was .10568, and our certified rate was .797.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we got that out there. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I have a motion from Kevin, a second from John. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the third and final reading in full or by title only?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to read ordinance number 2024-14 for the third reading by title only.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Chad. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, would City Attorney please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-14, an ordinance levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the city of Jasper, Indiana for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second.
A second from Phil. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Kirsten, when we get the final rate, will that be then published? You put it out as a final?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-15. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the second reading in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read it by title only.
I have a motion from Vince to read by title only?
I'll second.
I have a second from Paul. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would City Attorney please read ordinance number 2024-15 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-15, an ordinance appropriating money for the city of Jasper, Indiana for the year 2025.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
And a second from Kevin. Further discussion?
And Kirsten, just to reiterate again what the total budget is that we're approving.
Our total appropriations for 2025 are $28,83,171.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none? Call for vote. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the third and final reading in full or by title only?
Move to read by title only.
I have a motion from Kevin to read by title only.
Second.
And a second from Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would City Attorney please read ordinance number 2024-15 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-15, an ordinance appropriating money for the city of Jasper, Indiana for the year 2025.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
Second.
A second from Chad. Further discussion? Hearing none? Call for vote. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ordinance number 2024-15 has passed. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-17. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the second reading in full or by title only?
Make a motion to read by title only, please?
I have a motion from Paul for title only.
Second.
A second from Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would City Attorney please read ordinance number 2024-17 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-17, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana establishing fees for activities of the Jasper Department of Parks and Recreation.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second.
A second from Phil. Any further discussion? No comments, Tom, or anything? Okay. All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the third and final reading by title only or in full?
Make the motion to read by title only, please?
Do I have a motion from Paul to read by title only?
I'll second that motion.
A second from Nancy. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would City Attorney please read ordinance number 2024-17 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-17, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana establishing fees for activities of the Jasper Department of Parks and Recreation.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Chad.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion from Chad, and a second from Nancy.
That'll be fine.
Further discussion?
Mayor, I just want, for the public's sake, it looks like we're not talking about these things. We discussed this in depth at the last meeting, so we're just really approving this on the second and third reading. It was already approved on a first reading at the last meeting. It's a raise in some of the fees for golf and various other things within the park department.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, and beyond just the discussion within the council, it was also through the park board and that pretty heavily.
Correct.
Everybody's been involved.
Yeah. Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-18. Could I ask for a motion to read the ordinance on the second reading in full or by title only?
Make a motion to read by title only?
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
And a second from Kevin. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would City Attorney please read ordinance number 2024-18 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-18, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana authorizing the city of Jasper, Indiana to enter a conditional project expenditure agreement, North Ridge Estates Project, and the grant of the proceeds thereof to Kirsten's Development, Inc., Kirsten's Home and Designs, Inc., and/or their assigns and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Kevin made the motion and John second. Further discussion?
Oh, I have a lot of questions. Vince, go ahead, because you have done quite a bit of research on this.
I did send out a few emails, but I kept some highlights, a few notes, and off the top, I didn't believe that the TIFs should be directly used to help lower somebody's home price, especially when their average household income is about 30% more than the average in the city. And then I had another objection based on the burden that it's going to impose on the taxpayers and the community, so that if this TIF does advance, I would just ask, like Paul had, I think, said earlier, that if there is any funds beyond the emergency, or beyond the repayment of the infrastructure, that we use those for emergency services, and then I'd also ask that the TIF be limited. And then with that, with the tax burden, you know, beyond those years after that infrastructure's paid, that TIF kind of becomes a hidden tax on the constituents, because their tax rates would have gone down if the increased assessed values of these properties had been included in the tax pool, and that's the way I understand it. And then lastly, you know, I didn't believe this project passed the butt-for test, and then reading again, Section 7 in the findings for the ordinance, you know, if you read that, this property doesn't fit that at all. You know, it's just, it's not a, it's a false statement as related to this property, so I just don't see how that could be, how that could be right.
Basically, what that's saying is that without the TIF, this project wouldn't come about, but that's, that's a question for Ruger to answer. If you don't get the TIF, are you doing the project anyway? Hey, Ruger.
You did.
Why don't you come up and...
Good evening. Ruger Kirsten's here on behalf of Kirsten's Development, Inc. Yeah, to answer that question directly, this project, sorry, has been ready to go for a while now, so if it was going to happen anyways, we would have started moving dirt by now. Yep.
Is there no dirt moved out there at all?
No.
So, in Section 7, the findings, this says the common council finds that this economic development area has become undesirable or impossible for normal development and occupancy because of a lack of development, cessation of growth, deterioration of improvements or character of occupancy, age, obsolescence, substandard buildings, or other factors that have impaired values or prevent a normal development property or use of property in the area.
Yeah.
I mean, that just doesn't...
Yeah, I think that's...
My understanding was this property has been, Kirsten's has been trying to get this property for quite some time.
We've been looking at land in a lot of places for a long time, and a lot of the land that would be able to be sold was not favorable land, and that's why we didn't have any other large subdivisions laid out by now, is because we didn't have access to land that would be even buildable, I guess to say, within a reasonable rate. I mean, anything could be built, but it's at what cost? So this one, I think in those terms, they're used, they're used in there, but really, you know, I don't know exactly what the other commercial TIFs and things state, but I know in several other items, whenever these types of funding mechanisms are put in place, that terminology is used, and I think anybody could make an argument that anything could be favorable, really, and the question would be that if it really was, in my opinion, if it really was favorable, and there's a lot of reasons why it's not favorable, and some of that boils down to cost, and that's why we're here today, land cost.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to jump in, because I think it's important for you to know that the language that is included in this ordinance is statutory language. It's included every time that we go through this process for a TIF, so that's why that specific language is included, but you'll know that it does say "and/or" for other reasons, and I'm sure Ruger will get to it, but there are a number of reasons why developing this area is difficult, most of them related to utilities and stormwater, and so it's not surprising, at least us, that the developer would seek incentives, particularly when they are trying to reach a price point that we've identified at the city as being a necessary price point, so.
So is the short answer that you wouldn't develop this if it would not be for the TIF?
Correct. Yep.
Although you've already purchased the property.
Yep, we would just sit on it, farm it. Yep.
And so you had also mentioned something about, you had applied for some ready funds.
Correct.
When would you know about that?
Yep, so the projects have all been submitted, and based on the feedback that I've gotten through individuals, is that they have not selected projects yet for our region.
So, I mean, that makes a big difference, all the way from reducing a lot by $6,500 with the TIF to with the ready, $13,000 reduction in the lot price.
Correct.
Is what your letter said.
That's correct, yeah.
So...
Because the TIF...
When would you know when the ready funds would be available, because that could affect the whole project?
That's only going to make it better.
I realize that, but it may or may not happen.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but without, without the TIF...
The ready's not possible.
Then we don't, then there's, yeah, then we won't qualify for the ready.
I don't think we can even count on the ready, really, we just, we've got to act like it's not there.
And that's why, that's why I tried to, from the beginning, I tried to propose it as two mutually exclusive agreements where, you know, in the beginning, whenever this first got brought to was, you know, for this to make sense and for us to get the lot prices into the mid $30,000s, the TIF accomplishes that, and the amount that we requested accomplishes that, but then I kind of went a little bit further and said, you know, it's a very competitive program, yes, we've been successful in the past on another development with ready funds, but that's going to make it that much better for the end user, and our intentions are to pass 100% of those savings on to the end user.
That was going to be one of my points in there, when this came before the plan commission, that we sent forward with the favorable recommendation to the council on there, that was my understanding, was the TIF wasn't necessarily going to go back in the builder's pocket, that they're going to build this out and hang on to this. There was 100% pass-through to help lower the cost in there, and again, depending on how you read the statutory language on there, one of the things that I went back to and was looking at was the succession of growth. We're growing at a small rate in there, but we're still growing, we're still on the upswing from the last census bureau on there, and when I go back and I look at, from the plan commission, in my 11 years being involved there, it's been several since we've had a large development come back and throw up this again, so I actually tasked Josh with going back and finding, I mean, the Platts, the last two large ones that were done happened to both be with Kirsten's. Brookstone, which went through seven phases, started in 2004 with Phase 1, 2 was in '05, 3 was in '06, then we hit the pause with the financial crisis and didn't pick that up again until '13, and Windsong Edition, which is to the direct north of where this was, started in 2006 and terminated out in 2017. Took a while to build that out and go through. I think what this is, my objective for you guys to accomplish here is, this is going to be built out in a little quicker timeframe than what we were, with the TIF dollars, being able to lower that down.
And that's, I think you're hitting, that's the main point here in the question about the project itself. I mean, this entire project has been designed for us to market these lots with the TIF funding, to get the lots at that price point. If the lot costs are a true market with no, any type of assistance or anything that we can help pass on the cost savings to the end users, I mean, this project has to be retooled and recreated into, if it gets done, into something totally different. It could be, I could come back and ask for apartments, I could come back and ask for something totally different.
I guess I was...
But the housing project itself, that as it's proposed right now, no, it wouldn't make sense financially.
That's the housing project. What I'm talking about is the development itself. So if the TIF didn't go through, what would you do with that land?
Farm it.
Farm it?
Yeah.
Back to farming?
Yeah.
Or would you develop it with other means, apartments or duplexes or things like that?
No, we've got a lot of land right now to build out for apartments, so it would be many, many years, sorry, before we were able to get to this for any type of apartment housing.
And I know there's land adjacent to that also, that you would be looking to develop in the future, I believe, would you be asking for a TIF on that property into the future also?
If the price point on those homes, if this development is successful, and we believe the market would be saying that it's calling for more homes of this type, then we would like to utilize that tool again if it's available.
Josh, would you come up and speak to the housing study?
I have one more question for Ruger before you grab Josh. Do you anticipate asking for repayment from utilities in any way, shape, or form for this development?
What do you mean?
I think Brookstone 7, you had an agreement where you paid for main extensions or sewer extensions, or the city paid you back for sewer...
But that's a state statute now.
Right, I know.
No, this would be...
This would be in lieu of any of that.
That would be in lieu of it, okay.
Correct, yeah, this is kind of the all-encompassing...
Okay.
So there would be no utility payback on this?
No, that's what, that's what these TIF dollars are, I'm sorry, this thing's got some feedback, that's what the TIF dollars are being used for, is the public infrastructure utility installation, so that would cover what you're referring to, that's in lieu of that, so there would be no additional request.
And again, remembering that we were talking at the last meeting, I believe, five and a half million dollars for infrastructure.
That's our estimate right now, as long as it...
Was the best estimate.
Doesn't go up between now and...
We're potentially getting you back 20% of that 1.1 million back.
Yeah, respectively, closer to 25%, give or take, depending on how...
But you're not actually getting that back, are you?
No, so that's where, yeah, so...
So you don't need that to build these, right?
Yeah, we're covering 25% of the cost.
Of the infrastructure.
Yeah, but...
We have to have the infrastructure in the ground.
Money's coming off the lots, isn't it?
Yeah, to get that lot cost into...
To get it down.
To get it down.
Yeah.
To be able to build the price point of homes that we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
That's the...
You're trying to get $250,000 home.
Correct.
In some of those, and...
Correct.
The lot price would take it above that, is, that was our original discussion in the original.
My objection isn't at all to building houses, not even in the slightest, it's just, you know, the taxing mechanism that's going to, that is going to happen. It's just, you know, the, the taxing mechanism that's going to, that is going to happen from this. That's just really my biggest concern.
That was the other thing, is we were apparently supposed to have from Baker Tilly what the tax impact would be. And I think that's why they're here, from the school corporation, the airport, the county, what is the tax impact not only to our residents, but to those in the surrounding area? And we don't have that in front of us. So we could, I, this, I'm not arguing against the project either. We definitely need more homes, and we need homes, in my opinion, we need homes less than $250,000, not, $250,000 is still a very expensive home, I believe, for average people that say work in the factories or whatever. But what tax impact will that have on the rest of our residents? And we don't have that in front of us to say what that is, or whether we can make a, an educated decision on that.
Well, you do, though. I mean, Ruger is standing in front of you, and he has said that he will not build this if he does not get the TIF. And so the tax impact study that Baker Tilly presented is, in fact, what, what is the implication? What is the, what is the effect if he gets the TIF versus if he doesn't get the TIF? And if he doesn't get the TIF, there's no building.
Yeah, but that didn't answer the question, what the tax impact is on the residents and the surrounding areas.
Well, it's zero, because if the, if there's nothing built, then there's no change in the taxes.
No less, just no additional.
Because the, what it is giving the tax base remains the same.
Well, I, I think what she's getting at is what is it if it's built, not what if it, what is it if it's not?
I think the, I mean, the, Richard or Matt, feel free to jump in at any time.
Let me, let me answer that question that Vince just posed. Then you're talking about so many assumptions, because we don't know what will be built there. If, if the TIF does not go forward, we do know that the proposed project will not be built there. So then the question is, well, what will be built there? And if we once decide what will be built there, then what, then what do the tax, what does the tax look like? And I just don't know how you can have a meaningful answer to that question when everything that you're basing the answer on is an assumption that might happen who knows how many years from now.
Though the question is, if we approve the TIF, what is that tax impact on our residents and the residents in the surrounding area? That's the question. It's not if it doesn't go through, if we approve the TIF and if the project goes through, what is that tax impact? I'm not seeing anything from Baker Tilly on that. Maybe you all have, but I haven't.
None of us have yet.
I, I think the, the common response back to that is that the existing taxpayer is not affected because it's not, it's not a net change for them, because they're still getting the exact, the assessed value of the existing raw land that they're currently collecting tax on right now. That is still received, it's just the increment, I think everybody knows, yeah, above that. So I think that what there is to gain, though, is that, you know, the utility groups are then able to collect the utility revenue right away off of this investment. It's going to drive the local economy. I mean, we use all local subs and contractor suppliers and things and that such. I'm going down a, you know, maybe off-topic from, but I'm saying from an overall economic benefit, the amount of jobs that this will produce. And almost everything stays local with us building it. So I think there, outside, it's creating a very good economic impact for the community. And what I would say is more, if it goes through and the project is built, is a delayed gratification on future tax base for 100 years to come. But yet, the, the TIF funds that are being pooled together for however long the TIF stays in after the, the amount is paid back, can't speak on behalf of the city, but those are also being used for productive uses for the residents of the city of Jasper. So everybody's benefiting from the, the TIF funds and everything, all the, everything that's generated from the project. So, again, maybe speaking outside of my lane on the project itself, more the community as a whole, but, so that's a very, I guess, a long-winded answer too. And again, Richard and Matt are on this call, guys, if you want to jump in and...
We have, they're muted, we'll have to open it up for them.
So some of the other conversation that we talked about in here was not necessarily, again, that maybe we don't need 20 years. If, if they're going to build this thing out, we're going to get it done in six or seven, maybe it's 12, maybe it's 13 or 15. If it took them 11 years to finish that Windsong with the financial crises that happened in the middle, none of us are suitors. We can't see what's coming in the next couple of years in there. But we can sunset that early. And I had a conversation with a school board member out here the other day, or last week, in this same thing, and saying, you know, maybe we don't need, if it's three, that we start collecting heavily, where we can start paying it back, and we get it paid back in six or seven, so that puts us at 10. Maybe we go the 11th or 12th year, and then apply those dollars back towards fire protection, police protection, whatever else we may need, and then sunset. I mean, nothing says we have to do 20, correct?
That's right.
We, we can do that at any point in our thing, and it makes sense to me. I mean, if this is a tool and it's worked well on this one, and get the next development that comes through, we'd like to use it again without giving away all that revenue. I think that's a, a very valid reason, a valid point to, to talk about, not to gather it for that, for that additional eight years.
In the back, you have Paul with that. The redevelopment has to review the expenditures on an annual basis on all these TIFs, so there's a check there. Now, will we all be on the board and remember all this? Who knows?
But this is 100%...
And that was, that was discussed. It was discussed in redevelopment, and I think we had a 4-1 vote. And, and I think the 1 would have probably voted hard if there would have been a sunset on it right away, but, you know...
We also had the conversation, or I did, with the school board member on there too, that I believe by the state statute, we are allowed, if there's a project they're working on, we can dedicate some funds from that TIF to the school corporation for certain projects, correct?
It does have to qualify.
Well, yeah, we have to qualify. Yeah, but we, but we, that is available out there too, so...
And that's for our existing TIF also.
That's right.
TIFs already.
It would be advantageous if we had, instead of only a TIF at our disposal, if we had a residential abatement that we could use. I mean, that could be a useful tool, and you're not talking about a 20-year lock on that. But we don't have it, so I, I wanted to say that you have to acknowledge that there would be some kind of impact. Without Baker Tilly's numbers, I, I don't know what it looks like, but it's almost in reverse, okay? So like, for example, if you, if magically tomorrow, our TIFs, our existing TIFs were released, that would have to have a positive impact on individual taxpayers' rates. Is that correct?
It would push our rate down a little.
Absolutely. So it's in reverse. Now, while a new increase is not going to be experienced by existing taxpayers, we do have to allow for that, I mean, as part of the equation. I mean, we got to realize that for a time, these rates are artificially high as a result. But do we get greater benefit from this tool than not? I personally am having a hard time wrapping my mind around that language that Vince points out. I, I don't find it unattractive, an, an area unattractive for development.
It's unattractive without the infrastructure.
That's right. Yeah.
And you look, you know, you mentioned we, we paid Brookstone for the sanitary. It, it's something I've kind of said all along too. I mean, really, the city maybe should be providing all the infrastructure if they want to develop properties, but we can't do that either. So this is a tool that it's, you know, we're getting it back over time, so...
It's an investment.
Yeah.
Well, at the last meeting when we passed it on the first reading, we did talk about using this as kind of a pilot program. And we definitely don't want to extend it out for 20 years. So where is that compromise? 10 years, 8 years? I personally think 12 years is too long, but we also have to realize that we have to have that period of time where we're collecting the money to be able to pay it also.
I thi, I think that's why it's reviewed on an annual basis.
Is that number changed occasionally, or not yet because the TIFs are too...
Well, we'll know each year what we disperse and what we don't.
Yeah, it'll depend on, it'll depend on...
Because we'll know, we'll know when it's paid back.
Correct.
When it's paid back, we can make a decision.
Yeah.
I know there's a, a lot of, wow, that's echoing that. There's a lot of good discussions coming out of this, and one of the things that sticks in my mind, and I really like from that standpoint, was the comment you made about, I know, so I mentioned tonight, that the house was probably, the homes are not in what we consider a starter price range on there, but I look at, I, I've talked to so many people almost last week and asked about, and they came up for them to upgrade their home, if they're in a 150, 175,000 a home, and they had the opportunity to upgrade to a nicer house and a nice neighborhood, and immediately have some savings in there because of the TIF on there. Would it be advantageous for them? And everybody shook their head like, well, yeah, I, I would love to do that, which, you know, you mentioned earlier that that would then free up the existing house that they have for sale. And I've also talked to several manufacturing companies this last week, just, you know, talking, you know, I work for Jasper Agents, obviously, and, you know, we have, we have a shortage like you would believe, and, and how do we solve that? Get more homes in the area, and homes people can afford. This, this is going to free up some property that a lot of these associates, that we could hire, would want to live in a home like that. I, I just think it's a win. I, I just think it, again, we, we always ask ourselves, is the juice for us to squeeze? And there, there are some negatives, you know, that we're, we're unclear of, but the beauty of it is that, you know, we could stop it in 10, 12 years if we chose to do so, but we won't know until we try this, and I, I just think this is a win. So, again, I, I'm respectful of all, I know Vince and you guys have done a great job bringing up some very good information on there. I, I've looked at that personally, I weighed that, and I just feel the, the advantage of having these initial homes is so worth it. So, again, that's just my opinion on there, but just wanted to bring it up.
I'm reading in the current ordinance, the way it's written, now that is ordinance, under Section 4, the 3, number 3, I guess it is, that it mature on any date not more than 10 years after the date of execution. So it looks like we already have the 10 years. Where are you all reading that it's 20 years?
So that, that 10 years is assuming that we get, that we are able to repay that conditional expenditure agreement within that period of time.
Where, where in here does it read that the TIF would be for 20 years?
The TIF itself statutorily is 20.
That's right.
Statutorily, it would be 20 years?
Yes.
So, again, my, my comfort level is that we do have a mechanism built in to review this. So, you know, if we determine at that point, it's done what we needed to do, and we need to sunset this thing, that's what the redevelopment commission's for, so...
Even statutorily, if it's 20 years, can we write an ordinance that says 10 years?
Okay.
Yes, this is Rich, starting.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
Preemptively, we could do this.
Yeah, he's been, he's been on there since the beginning.
No, preemptively, we could write an ordinance that limits it to 10?
Well, what if we don't get paid back?
I see, I see. Yeah.
That's exactly right. That's, that's why I like to have a view...
The 20 years is to allow us enough time in case the homes don't sell as quickly as we hope they will, to get us paid back. And as soon as that's paid off, you can sunset it that time. It's reviewed annually, so it's not going to be anybody doing anything behind the scenes. It's all done above board, it goes to the redevelopment, and it'll come back here. So...
Rich, what, what would happen if you set it for 10 years and it wasn't paid back in that 10 years?
Uh, it would, it would just be unpaid. It would go away.
We'd, wouldn't go away, we'd have to pay it.
Would the city be on the hook for it, or would it go away?
Well, let's let Rich answer that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
So would, would we still owe, or would it go away? Or Kirsten, you phrase your question.
What, you said...
You, you would still not owe it, it would go away, if it's limited to 10 years.
So the premise is that Ri, Rich, that Ruger, that Kirstens is going to build at a certain rate, and based on that rate, it will be, the conditional expenditure agreement will be paid off in probably less than 10 years, but no more than 10 years. If they don't build at a rate that accommodates that pay, payment schedule, then that's on them.
Better get them built, Ruger.
So in the same vein, if by chance, but this says we have to pay it back in 10 years.
No. Which is, Rich just described.
The way this ordinance is worded, it says must be within 10.
And again, that's, them shouldering some risk as well.
Yeah.
If the same thing happens, it happened in '08, in '09. We've got to take a four-year, four-year pause and...
Very confident we'll get them before 10 years.
No, that's right.
Well, that goes back to my concern about the taxpayers in Jasper, DuBois County, and where the surrounding districts or whatever. So, I mean, if we're basing this on a 20-year statutory, I, I'm not comfortable with that. I would like to see that number reduced. We, we've talked in some emails and things about making that number 10 years, 12 years, but I'm just not comfortable with it going out 20 years, because then it does become a burden on some of the other taxpayers.
So just to be clear, if the ordinance says that the maturity would be 10 years, then the expenditure agreement would expire after 10 years, but you could still have the allocation area, the TIF area, continue on for another 10 years? It just wouldn't pay off the expenditure agreement anymore? And Rich, is it not true that at that time too, the redevelopment commission could act to extinguish the TIF? They say it serves its purpose, 10 years, we're done with the TIF in this area, and we will... Correct, yeah, that's right.
That's the way we understood it on the redevelopment.
Yeah. Any other discussion points on this?
I would like to see Baker Tilly's numbers.
And, and I can speak to that. The, the tax impact statement that we have already prepared and circulated to the taxing units is based on really the circumstances that Ruger described. It's, if the TIF is not established, then the development does not occur, so there's nothing lost to the overlapping taxing units, because there, there would be nothing gained from the new development. What's being, and I can't remember who said it, what's really the circumstance here is you're foregoing during the period of time that the TIF capture, the downward pressure on the property tax rates that would be generated from the new development that is made possible through the use of TIF. So we, we can quantify, and I, I have done, just for the purpose of discussion tonight, you know, what would this development, it came online, without the TIF, what is that downward pressure on tax rates? And it's about 2.95 cents. No, that, that's what we're calculating. What that translates to for the median homeowner is 45 cents. And the median home value in Jasper is $185,500 for the Census Bureau. But again, that's presupposing that Ruger would be able to construct this new development without the use of TIF, and all of the assessed value from the, from the new development were to flow into the tax base of the overlapping taxing units, which he, he's represented tonight, that that wouldn't be the case. So I, I do agree with the earlier statement that I believe Renee made, that our analysis is looking at that specific circumstance, that without this use of TIF, there would be no project constructed, so there's no impact on the taxpayers from the use of TIF. I'll also note that with the use of TIF, the library's referendum rate, that does not apply to, to TIF. So it's as if the TIF doesn't exist for the referendum rate. So our tax impacts, impact statement, excuse me, does show the impact of that. We think, we didn't quantify it for the taxpayers, but that does put downward pressure on that specific rate, holding all else constant. And that would reduce the rate at full build-out, we're estimating about 22.8, almost 22.9 million dollars at full build-out, of 0.0005 cents per $100 assessed value on the referendum rate, because that does see the benefit of the additional assessed value. And to, to just go a step further too, the, the wider analysis that we've been asked And to, to just go a step further to the, the wider analysis that we've been asked to prepare, and that's really looking at layering in some of the other variables that exist in the, what I like to call the soup of, uh, property taxes for local governments. Our impact statement holds all else constant to isolate the effects of this development. So we're holding the property tax rates for rate-controlled funds at 2024 certified levels. We're holding assessed values at 2024 certified levels. We're holding property tax levies for your debt service funds and also the, the funds that are subject to the maximum levy limitation at 2024 certified levels, just to isolate the impact of this action or the, the lack thereof. But what we were asked to do was to illustrate, we know that, you know, reality happens, other years turn, there are other ingredients in that soup. What would it look like if you layered this project on, assuming that there are budget adjustments moving forward, assuming that there's other growth in assessed value? And so we are putting that together to illustrate conceptually what that would look like, but that by no means represents kind of an isolated impact of this project because we're layering in so many other assumptions. It's more to spur a conceptual discussion and understanding and rather than, uh, you know, trying to quantify a, an exact impact of this project. And, and that, that more, that wider analysis is forthcoming. We've been spending quite a bit of time building out that model because there's, there's a lot of things that go into it.
And Matt, will that be more favorable to the project? Because if, if you're, you're talking about increased values, that's going to raise the property taxes and that's going to actually enhance the project, correct?
Um, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but one way to look at it is if you're growing the pie of the county beyond just this project, it lessens the interaction of this project with the rates and levies of the overlapping taxing units. Uh, but, you know, you could also think of it through the lens of, of a rising tide lip salt boats, where if the values of the county are increasing overall, that could increase the value generated by this project as well.
Okay, thank you.
So that's about as live a report as you're going to give them, Baker Tilly, on the taxing back.
You know, we're, we're notoriously conservative, but it, it's, it's born out of experience and kind of working through these mechanisms, trying to best illustrate these concepts for the benefit of policymakers.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Things do happen, so.
Matt, can you clarify with that, you said 45 cents for the average taxpayer?
Yeah, for the median home value, I asked one of my colleagues to put together this calculation. That, that's the impact that we calculated at full buildout, which is estimated to come a few years down the road. And I believe we had estimated that it's possible to pay this off shortly after full build, buildout.
Ruger, what is your anticipation?
And that does, I, I would also offer that that does not quantify for, you, you've got real dollars that would be received by the redevelopment commission because this conditional flood project and expenditure agreement is not pledging 100% of the revenues to repayment of the obligation. Is that correct, Rich?
Yes. It's 85%, right?
Yes.
85%.
Yeah, I see.
So, so that does to the point that someone else mentioned earlier, that does provide more immediate revenues that the city can deploy on public safety, for example, or seeking out partnerships with other taxing units such as the school corporation.
That 45?
I think that's a policy decision.
I'm sorry, that 45 cents, is that, does that mean 45 cents per $100 of assessed value?
No, that's, that's 45 cents applied to a $185,500 home. That's 45 cents because in the total tax bill.
Ruger, what's your anticipated, I, I know you can't determine the sale of homes, but what would be your anticipated build out, total build out date?
Yeah. So this is, um, as Paul alluded to earlier, um, not to compare it to another subdivision that really did take a long time. That was a different circumstance where there was different land developers involved and some of those additions, we just acquired lots and we weren't the land developers. So that, the good thing is about this one is that the land is controlled currently, so we're able to move at the pace of the home sales truly, so we don't, we're not at the mercy of, um, landowners. So with that being said, um, we're hoping that if everything would go well today, um, later this year, early next year, start moving dirt on phase one, which would conclude the 28 villas and 12 single-family lots. And then starting in 2026, probably in 2025, again, a little bit later in that year, but in 26, uh, then we would clear and get ready for 64 more lots. And then in 2027, we would get ready for 51 lots. And then that would conclude the 155, but I would say that the estimated build out would probably be 2031, 2032, so that puts us out like 78 years ahead. Yeah.
So a fairly rapid pace, really.
Correct. That's the intention.
Not, notwithstanding some of the conversation we had on there too, my goal wasn't that we're going to get 183 new residents in Jasper. I think if we make up a third of the development is to people who we end up out of town, it would be a real win. Field.
And that can happen, but you don't know.
You don't know.
I mean, that definitely happened in your Autumn Creek and those areas. It's people that have existing homes more than likely move to like Autumn Creek.
Yeah. I think that's, you know, to Phil's point about the, you know, step up, step down depending on what stage of life you're in, um, but it does free up existing housing stock too whenever there's a, a good supply of new homes. So that's, it's a very healthy for the housing market locally.
So based on his build out, what, is there no reason why we couldn't put the 10-year on here instead of a 20-year?
Again, I go back to not being able to see the future and what ifs, what if, there's, there's a lot of what ifs in that 10-year time.
Then the redevelopment commission adjusts those, that, that number as time goes on in their annual review.
Could always add a new 10 years, could we not?
Or two or four or whatever.
Repill the old, replace it with a new?
I believe that's true. Rich is on.
Is that true, Rich?
I think you said that earlier.
Yes, that's correct.
I would rather see it adjusted upward if necessary rather than adjusted downward at some point, because I think you get too comfortable with that 20-year and all of a sudden, the city says, well, we have this extra TIP dollars coming in, let's use it for a different project or whatever. So, um, I, I just am more comfortable with a lower number in the years that this is under the TIP.
I, I would just imagine, and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, that, the, the majority of TIPS that could be, uh, sunsetted early probably are not. Is that a fair assessment?
I'd say that's fair, sure.
That's my concern.
I, I, I like what you're saying, Nancy.
I would say that there is, um, the built-in, um, cautionary tool is that we can only use those TIP dollars for a project that is in or supporting that TIP.
Right.
So.
And my understanding is that project has to be, go through a process as well too. It doesn't, I mean, through the redevelopment, it has to be approved by the redevelopment commission.
Right now, the only thing that has been approved specifically in the plan for use for these TIP dollars is this development and the infrastructure. So if we wanted to add a different project, we would have to go through this process. We would have to go to the, the redevelopment commission and the council to, to amend the plan.
And that could happen.
If we didn't feel like we had control, so the RDC, I mean, again, notwithstanding because I understand trying to keep taxes down, but the impact over the next 20 years is $9 on a $185,000 home. I mean, it all adds up. I get it.
It does.
It's $9.
I think it's, it's.
I would rather proceed with caution.
Using a TIP and, uh, something like this to help reduce the prices of homes, to me, you know, I don't know if that's.
And you're concerned about that.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the right thing to do with a TIP. You know?
My shirt. Um, I think the goal, the goal identified in, you know, a lot of housing groups and studies is how to bring the cost of housing down, right?
That's really.
Yep. Yes.
Affordable housing.
Correct.
I, I see you're concerned about that, Vince, but are people that can afford housing?
Is there juice for the squeeze of that, of the $9, you know, being palatable? And I don't, when I said earlier, okay, I don't see my house beating their door now, want to build a whole bunch of homes, this is a great opportunity for us. And again, if it doesn't work on this one, we don't do the second one, but we, we gotta, we gotta try this and I, and to that point, the, the reason for a residential TIP is to board and buy some house. I mean, that's what we're doing it for, so I couldn't think of a better way of doing it, so.
Yeah. We appreciate what you're doing.
Yep.
Thank you.
So are we all trying to say 10 years is what we would after and everybody would be okay with that or?
It doesn't matter as long as you can add, uh, additional years if it's not paid off in the 10. You have to verify that. If you verify that, I don't care if it's 10, eight, seven, whatever.
I would definitely not recommend anything less than 10.
So, so can we make the adjustment on this then?
I was really comfortable with 12. That gives you a little bit of, in case, again, we get a rainy weather and it delays construction, does whatever, I mean, again, but we, we can stop at any time with RDC that we need to.
I'm just not comfortable with 20. I just think it's way too out there.
Are you asking me a question? I, I didn't hear a question.
Well, I think, I think we're asking what adjustments do we need to make in this?
Can you add on to the end? If you make it 10 years, can you add on to if we need to more?
If we have to pay it back.
You're right. That's the.
And Rich did indicate we could, so.
Kirsten, from your standpoint, are you comfortable with the payback within 10 years?
I think Baker Tilly had projected that we could pay, have them paid back within six to seven years, so I do feel like 10 gives us a little wiggle.
Six to seven after we start collecting?
No, we won't start collecting for three years and we could pay them back within three and four years, was my understanding, after we start collecting.
Okay.
That's the report that I understood, yeah.
Yes.
That's, I didn't understand that.
So it's pretty aggressive.
That's a great announcement.
It's pretty aggressive.
All right, something that hasn't been mentioned, uh, we will conceivably pick up additional tax revenues, um, sales tax, income tax.
Income tax.
I'd discuss that, edit, co it for the county.
Yeah.
And again, if they're already here, it's just shifting, shifting where they're at, collecting that. But if we can gather new residents, that's, that's the big deal.
We need new residents.
And that's the, you know, overall, when you, when you think of the priorities we have in the Upland region and specifically Dubois County, housing is, is a constraint to our industry because they can't get people to move here. There's no housing stock available for them to move here to take these jobs. Uh, we've heard that over and over again by industry. What can we do to move housing forward? Now, this residential TIP, it's our first one, and like you said, Nancy, it's a pilot. You know, we said we would see what we could do about piloting it out and see how it works. It's been working in other communities and I, I think it's, uh, it's a tool, it's, it's been proven. It's, to me, it's, it helps us address a problem, our constraint we have in our county.
But really, statewide, it's a new, it's a new tool statewide though. What, is it only one or two years old?
Oh, it's been around.
It's been around. I mean, we went to the AIM conferences on, on TIP and, I think it's been in California, Chicago.
Oh, I meant in Indiana though.
There was a lot more restrictions before this.
You had to use like a 1% move or something?
Yeah, this loosened it up considerably.
It did, this past year.
Hey Mark, it wasn't near this good before.
Yep. So with, with the discussion we've had, what changes, if any?
I, I would have to go through the ordinance and make sure. Um, I don't think that, I wouldn't feel comfortable just coming up with language right now on the fly.
Okay.
I moved to table.
I don't think any of this would be, I'll, I'll second it, move to table.
Where, where were we at prior to this?
We had a, a motion by Kevin to approve on the second reading and a second by John. This was our discussion point. At this point, I need to go ahead and take a vote on whether or not to move forward with it on the second reading. This is a second reading. So if there's no further discussion on that.
Then we can table it before the.
Then we can table before the third.
Proceededly.
Yeah, I just would like to know if this does anything to your timeline.
We have the third reading at the next council meeting, that's still okay in your timeline?
And maybe you'd know about that ready grant by that time.
Hopefully, yeah. I don't know, I really don't know what they're, I don't know, it's hard to get.
They are.
Yeah, it's hard to get answers, direct answers, yeah.
No, no one knows why it still takes so long for it to get the answers from them.
We know that. All right, so let's go ahead and take a vote on the second, uh, reading. I had a motion from Kevin, second by John, all in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I have two nays. Five-two. Okay, and we'll schedule then the third reading for the next council.
So do we go follow with Chad's motion then to table the third reading? And I seconded that.
So I guess.
We could schedule the third reading, is, is the normal protocol?
Yeah, so, um, though somebody is going to need to, I think, make a motion to change, to amend the language.
To amend the language in the ordinance to reflect a 10-year sunset phase for the third and final reading.
Paul, you're making the.
I'm making that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. So I have a motion from Paul and a second from Phil on amending the language. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of amending the language? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And now table it, table third reading.
Okay, and so Chad made a motion to table.
I'll second.
And I have a second from Vince.
I think Nancy's.
No, that's okay, Vince can do it.
All right, and all in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thanks Ruger.
Yeah, thank you.
This was a, it was council, I just want to say it was a healthy discussion. Ruger, I approve, I appreciate your engagement in this as we try to find our way.
I'm in charge of.
Yep, it, it's, for us, this is a new thing. These are, these are to be signed by council members. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-19. Could I ask for a motion to consider the ordinance for one reading only?
I still move.
I have a motion from Chad.
My second.
Second from Vince. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title only?
Make a motion, read by title only, please.
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
And a second from Phil. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-19 by title only.
An ordinance number 2024-19, an ordinance of fixing salaries and wages for the elected officials and the civil city employees of the city of Jasper, Indiana for the year 2025.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number 2024-19?
So.
I have a motion from Paul.
Second.
Second from John. Further discussion?
This is the civil, civil city salary ordinance. Um, it has the 3% raise increase that we discussed at budget time and a couple of the other changes that we made to some of the, some of the salaries.
Kirsten or Renee, could you reiterate the email that went around, what the findings were on the, the discount idea?
I think we have to do a little bit more work on that and we did not include it in, in this salary ordinance, but there was, um, there are some concerns from, um, a tax standpoint of if those, if those, um, benefits are not nominal to the employees and they would have to be taxed and tracked, and I'm not sure we have the, the ability in our office.
And did I read there was like a hundred, $100 threshold?
They said, they didn't, they never, the IRS doesn't exactly meet a threshold, but there was a, a lawsuit, I think, where they determined at one point that $100 was not even nominal, so. But we will continue to look into it, but it's not on this.
I mean, if, if, if it's not too difficult to carry out, I mean, I could conceive even, uh, making it an optional thing, you know, you, you kind of pre, in my mind, you preload a, a card that allows them to spend or not spend. If they don't spend it, it's not compensation.
I think it's a, it's a tracking issue for our, our team, for payroll to add it to their wages and, and also take out the taxes.
So we're getting there, but not yet?
We'll keep, we'll keep working on it.
We'll hear it at budget time next year to get going.
We, we generated some enthusiasm toward it, let's put it that way.
Government moves so quickly.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion from Paul and a second from John, all in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-19 has passed. Next ordinance, 20, 24-20. This ordinance is also available for one reading only, so I have a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Vince.
I'll second that motion.
Second from Nancy. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title only?
Make the motion, read by title only, please.
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from John. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with the city attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-20 by title only.
Ordinance number 2024-20, an ordinance of fixing salaries and wages for the utility employees of the city of Jasper, Indiana for the year 2025.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number 2024-20?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin and a second from Nancy. Further discussion?
I did want to make note that in this ordinance and in the one with the civil city employees, we're trying to, especially the administrative assistant, to kind of get that rate to about the same for all of those staff members. And so it's very evident in here that 26.54 an hour is consistent throughout this and that other ordinance.
Yes.
And we've been trying to do that for several years.
This is the utilities salary ordinance, also includes a 3% wage increase, and it does include a couple of the changes that Rob brought forth to you, I think to the council members that attended a meeting with him. And it was passed by the utility service board on Monday night.
Okay. Any other discussion on, if not, call for a vote. All in favor, say anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-21. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read ordinance 2024-21 by title only.
Motion from Nancy.
Second.
A second from Vince. All in favor, say anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance 2024-21.
Ordinance number 2024-21, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, providing for a uniform code for traffic upon the public streets of the city of Jasper, Indiana, truck routes and load limits, and setting forth truck load limits and street restrictions for the city of Jasper, Indiana, amending chapter 9.33, truck load limits and street restrictions.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Kevin?
Second.
Second from John. Further discussion?
I'm assuming these were all put in by Jeff and his team.
So what really started this is that we required a road, we were required to purchase a road bond when we did the cultural center. And it had to do with the intersection where Third and Mill that goes around. And we've been trying and trying to get that bond released from IDAM, and finally deter, they, they finally told us that the reason that they won't dismiss or, or release the bond is because we never passed an ordinance that restricts trucks from Mill Street at that location. So that's what started this. So we, I worked with Chad and Jeff, and we created the language to add to this table for that location. But as often is the case, as we were looking at this table, we found some other items that needed to be cleaned up, and I asked Jeff to review the table, and so I worked with him to make other changes that, that he thought were appropriate. So the table, I think, is now cleaned up, and it reflects what is also included in a, a map that we have of our restricted streets for truck purposes. It will also, after this first reading, go via resolution to the Board of Public Works as well. It's kind of out of order, but since we couldn't get the table completed in time, we're just gonna do three readings for the ordinance, but go to the Board of Public Works between the first and second readings, so.
And where we have, this may not be a question for you, Renee. I think Josh was working on this for a while. Were we ever able to get onto any of the GPS mappings, Garmin, Apple, Google, and establish truck routes for GPS for truck drivers?
But with our, within our own map, do we have any truck routes established? Because I don't think we ever have signs that say truck routes. I don't think there are any in the city. It might be nice to say that, so at least if you direct a truck driver to a truck route, they can say, oh yes, this is indicated as a truck route. And Jeff probably has a lot more input into something like that.
We do have, we do have a map. It shows unrestricted routes or streets in green, 10,000 pounds, or 10,000, what did I say? 10 tons, 10,000. 10 tons in red and 5,000, or 5 tons or less in yellow. And there are very few, but you can see on here where those are. So we do, we do have a map that shows those.
I know, Paul, we had talked about that before, so that they show up on a GPS or whatever, and.
Apparently that's difficult to do.
Jeff has got that. Now, I don't know, when I get it, you know, I zoom in on my computer and I can see, but I don't know how it shows up or how well it shows up, or, but I can talk to him and.
I've had a resident in my district that's had several trucks try to take Franklin Street down a hill, all across 13th, and turn around in his warehouse parking lot there, getting stuck, tearing up the road with the safety bar on the back of the trailer, and generally causing mayhem trying to get to a factor when they turn a block early and don't turn.
Oh, they don't know it.
They don't know, yeah.
I think this is an area that we've got to focus on, and I agree that the signage is pretty important as well.
Well, we made a lot of changes downtown. Mill, Mill Street access, we shut down. We shuttered traffic around the square when we did that. So we're really using 913 and 15 to get truck traffic back to our industrial area off of 231.
Yep. Any other discussion on these? Nancy, I take that truck route signage and that. I think we should take that to the Board of Public Works and really kind of work through that, so. So I have a motion from Kevin and a second from John to approve. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So we'll bring that one back again in November.
Yeah, this is first reading, so. Next is a resolution, resolution number 2024-19. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
Take the motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
I have a second from Vince. All in favor, say anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read resolution 2024-19 by title only.
Resolution number 2024-19, a resolution of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, confirming the designation of a portion of the city of Jasper as an economic revitalization area and approving a statement of benefits for Park Place Estates One LLC.
And at this point in time, I'm, I'm gonna open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this matter?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. I have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Vince. Public hearing is closed. Could I have a motion to pass and adopt resolution number 2024-19?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
I have a second from Vince. Further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for Ruger, and maybe I'm supposed to know this already, but I don't know it. This is phase three of your Park Place Estates. Is there a phase four, phase five, or is this, is this kind of finish your phases for that project?
Ruger Kirstens, on behalf of Premier Property Management, Kirstens Realty, this is phase three and it's not the final phase.
Okay.
I wish it was.
Well, you're only building like one or two buildings at a time in your phases. Is it one building?
No, we're doing between four and six buildings at a time.
Okay.
So this one here, I wanted to do, add 44 more two-bedroom units, but as we're getting to the tail end of this project, the topography on the south end of the site leaves us little to no room to move dirt and excavate out of that hillside to get the last 30 apartment units in there. So the site engineers recommended that on phase three, we tame it down to 28 units and leave where the, the other pads would have been, without be able to load in and load out the dirt whenever we do phase four. So phase three lighter than phase four is going to be heavier, but we'll conclude with phase four and then we'll be done. Yeah.
Because that's about all that property can withstand?
Correct. It'll be fully, fully built out at that time. Yeah.
Okay. And how many, I know that has something to do with this, but about how many would phase four have? How many units?
I think it's 50.
So it would be making up for the, that you're losing in this one? Would it make up for the, you're losing some?
Yeah, so what we would, what we would have built in phase three, we're adding those 16 units to phase four. So we're not losing any, we're not losing any density on the site. We're just changing the what phases are built in. Yeah. So this round, 28, and then to conclude will be 56, and that would give this site 150 total housing units whenever it's completed. But again, phase three is just 28 units for this one. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Thanks, Ruger.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion from Nancy and a second from Vince. This time I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is resolution number 2024-21. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
I'll make the motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Vince to read by title only.
My second.
I have a second from Paul. All in favor, say anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read resolution 2024-21 by title only.
Resolution number 2024-21, a resolution of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, awarding build, operate, transfer project, and taking certain other related actions.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open resolution 2024-21 up to a public hearing. So I'd like to open that. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to speak to it? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Seeing no one wanting to come up, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
My second.
A motion from Paul, second from Phil. All in favor, say anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Could I have a motion to pass and adopt resolution number 2024-21?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
Second.
And a second from John. I'll open it up for further discussion. And this is one step in the process of addressing the regional wellness center, the indoor sports and recreation facility that has been identified in our long-range comprehensive plan since 2011, is reemphasized again in 2019 when we adopted that plan. It's been one of our top priorities, but this can kept getting kicked down the road because of the potential cost impact. And at this point in time, we've, we've done a lot of vetting with potential developers and are in a pretty good position about teaming with them to find and determine what the final scope of the project will be in the, in the design phase. The initial conceptual design took place, gave us some round figures to work with, but we won't know until we get into the details. And that's really working together through this build, operate, and transfer process that has been established.
Right. So we chose to use this build, operate, transfer delivery method because we felt like that would be the best opportunity for the city to get the best bang for its buck, the most project out of the dollars that we have available to spend. So we came to the council and asked for the council to approve use of the BOT statute, which you did. And then we sent out requests for proposals and received proposals from five different, very qualified developers. And we sat down and interviewed four of them, and then we narrowed that to two more, two, and asked some additional questions. And, and ultimately, after we went through that, that process, we determined as a working group that included nine members, that Kremp Construction would be able to create the best project for the city. And that recommendation was forwarded to the council, and that's what this resolution is about. So the next part of this process is the scoping period. And that's what this resolution allows us to go forward with, where the city and our engineering architect firm, Haffer, and Kremp, sit down, and the Y, sit down at the table and go through a fairly long and rigorous design process that will culminate sometime next year in a, what is called a BOT agreement, which would have a guaranteed maximum price that both the city feels comfortable with and Kremp feels comfortable with. But that's, that will take a while. So what we hope and plan to do is to spend the next several months, probably between now and April of 2025, beginning that process and honing in on what the cost of the site prep will be. And, and then, once we've gotten to that point, so that they can start the construction of the site, the, the preparation of the site by sometime later in the summer, finding that guaranteed maximum price for the project and going forward with the rest of the construction. So right now, this resolution gives us the authority to go forward with Kremp in that scoping process.
In that regard, I have a lot of questions. In section two, because it was changed from the original version of the resolution, because we were not comfortable with the 45, not to exceed $45 million being in there. Actually, in section two, the word scoping was taken out and a final, the word final was put in there instead of scoping. And I'm curious as to why scoping was taken out and final was put in, because I don't see that those two words even mean anything nearly close to one another. It's just section two where it says a, a final bot agreement between the city and developer. In the first version, that word was scoping, not final.
So that's, that is the process. The scoping process is designed to get to the final BOT agreement.
But why did we take out the word scoping? Because that's not in here anywhere. Scoping, to me, kind of means research or investigating what you're doing or looking into the project. And that word has been removed from this ordinance.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, I can't answer that. I guess it, this seemed to make sense. So that's what the scoping process is, getting from where we are now to a final BOT agreement that has the guaranteed maximum price in it.
I would feel more comfortable if scoping was put back in the ordinance personally. Another question I have is, I, I wouldn't have a problem with any of this ordinance if it just ended the way the legal notice did, and it says, "The purpose of the hearing is to hear the recommendation to members of the council in order to make an award of a public-private agreement based on the proposal submitted by Kremp, Kremp Construction for the construction of the project." If that was the way this ordinance read and ended, I wouldn't have a problem with it at all. But it goes on to go even further, giving, and nothing against you, Mayor. But it goes on to go even further, giving, and nothing against you, Mayor, but it gives the mayor, the authorized individual, to really kind of move forward this, with this project almost on his own with, um, let's see, what is the term? Appropriate staff members of the city on behalf of the council. So I understand that method, but I'm not comfortable. I feel like that's way too much power given to the mayor and the appropriate city staff members acting on the behalf of the council. So that's one point I wanted to make. And the forty, up to forty-five million was taken out of this, and to me, it kind of leaves it open-ended. I would have been more comfortable if there was another, like, up to twenty million or up to thirty million or something, but now there's no dollar value in here at all. And I feel it leaves it very open-ended and almost like you can just spend to the moon for this project is the way this is reading to me.
Okay, let me, before you, um, let me answer a couple of those things. First, um, I, I have to apologize. You are, as far as having scoping in or not having the scoping in agreement in, I'm, I'm happy to put that back in. But what was taken out and was not intended to be deleted is, um, the last sentence of the original section two, which is, "It is understood that the final B O T agreement, including the final guaranteed maximum price, shall be subject to approval by the council." That is always the intention. Whether that's in here or not would have to happen because--
Well, I would feel comfortable if that was back in here.
Yeah. I, I was trying to do this from Nashville and--
I understand.
Um, but anyway, so that is intended to be in, and that can be, or will be certainly put back in. Um, just understand, there's no way for the city to enter that B O T agreement without it coming back to the council, because we have to have funding in place.
We don't--
So there, there are many other steps that have to happen from a financing perspective in order for the city to enter the final B O T agreement. So--
So the subcommittee that was used to, um, review the quotes that came in, the proposals that came in, will that subcommittee continue to be involved in this project?
Absolutely.
Yep. I'm in the working group.
Because I think that's very important.
We've got meetings scheduled on this. Listen, I did not share that with you guys, because we just, my phone didn't stop ringing for a half hour the other day, uh, in there. We're meeting every two weeks from now through next summer, basically, every Thursday afternoon, um, from now through next summer, uh, in there, and figuring out, again, what it is we can afford, what we can't afford, getting the financial stacks together, what we envision ultimately for this facility to be, um, over there. We all have these grand ideas. Let's just see where we can get it and how far we can get it built.
Well, my concern is that we don't go so far into debt in the city, is that we stifle other projects over the next twenty to thirty years, that we put all of our eggs in this basket for a progressive project, but yet we're stifling the progress of the community for the, for twenty or thirty years because we don't have any other money left to spend on anything else. That is a huge concern of mine and other constituents that I talk to.
Well, and that is, that is something that Clark Trezor and I have talked about. It's, um, not only do we need to have the financial stack put together as, as to where we're going to end up on pricing at the end of this, but then what is the long-range impact in our, in our cash flow and our financial plan? You know, that's a, that's something that, if Matt's still on, Baker Tilly is always touting that you gotta have that long-range financial plan here, and, and, uh, we, we believe in that. We, we've adopted that, so I think we have to know that. Obviously, the other projects will need to continue.
There definitely will be other projects into the future that we would hate to stifle further administrations on, because we have this wonderful regional wellness center, but yet we have nothing else, because we put all of our eggs in one basket.
Well, we're not going to put all our eggs in one basket. That's obvious. But, you know, this is a, this is a project that is not cheap. It's the highest, probably the highest-priced project we've ever addressed.
It would be quite affordable.
Yeah. And, and, uh, we've got to be very diligent in the way we go about this. I feel comfortable with Kremp Construction, because they're local, they, they, they know how to pinch a few pennies here and there. I know the guys. But, you know, they'll, they'll do it right at the same time.
I'm very comfortable with Kremp Construction.
Okay.
I'm very comfortable with them.
They'll do it right, and the reason we're doing this process is so that now their input is so valuable, and it's what we can do to minimize costs and the, the things we decide are needed in this project. And I think as a team, that if we're going to have a better product for a lot, for the money we invest in this, you know, and I say the money we invest in, you know, we're fortunate. Um, there's, there's a lot of people believe in this project, you know, and it is going to make a difference in recruiting talent to this area and retaining talent in this area, getting our kids to come back, you know. It, this is a big project for this community, not, not just Jasper, but for Dubois County and the surrounding area, so.
I have another question on the terminology. So in the third whereas, um, it would be addressing the design, construction, operation, and transfer of the bot project. I don't believe Kremp Construction is going to be operating this project. So to me, we're kind of passing, in this ordinance, a build-transfer project. And the word operation, which we're looking at, the YMCA potentially as being the operator of it, they're not mentioned anywhere in here, and it really looks like, according to this, that Kremp Construction is going to be operating that building.
So again, that's more of a, um, a legal term, legal terminology. I mean, that's, that's, um, so the operate portion of it will, um, probably last something like thirty to ninety days. Um, it's just a legal fiction, and I can't tell you why they've set it up that way. In some cases, the, the developer does, in fact, come in, and, in fact, in some situations, um, communities just don't have the wherewithal. They don't have the, the staff, they don't have the connections, they don't know where to begin on a project like this. So they send out a request for proposals and they hire, based on those requests, they, they, um, hire a developer that comes in and does everything. They do the planning, they do, um, the, the bidding, and they, they find the, from, from start to finish, they do everything, and they do, including, they finance it and they do operate it for a period of time. We are lucky and we don't need all those services and aren't using this delivery method to do all those things. But nonetheless, legally, we have to include that as part of this process.
Then at what point in the process do we develop a contract with the YMCA?
We're working on that now.
So it would be ready to go, basically, before that period's over?
Yes. Yes.
There's a finance committee now.
Renee, if I could, I could jump in a little bit here.
Please.
Um, so, uh, the historical basis for the statute is that when it was originally promulgated by the General Assembly, the idea they thought was that this would be something that would be used for large hundred-million-dollar projects for, like, toll roads or other kinds of constructions where the operator would actually operate, uh, the, the project. It, it has since evolved with various communities to be more of a, a way to get to a, a project where everybody's kind of working together, as the mayor just described, to have, um, the community work with the developer over time to develop a project that makes sense. And that operation portion of the statute under the build, operate, transfer stays in under the statute, so we have to have some, um, method to, to, uh, to comply with the statute. And, and what we've done is that we have a thirty-day operating period that is really not much more than the fact that they have agreed to stand by. And in this case, they'll work with the Y to quote-unquote "operate" for a thirty-day period.
That's fine, but that doesn't really make a lot of sense to me, what you just said, Rich. It makes no sense at all, because it just doesn't, it seems like it's skirting the whole thing, and, anyway. And so, Paul, you mentioned there's a finance committee being formed.
Yep.
So who would be a part of that finance committee?
Kirsten, myself, members of the Y. Uh, I was, Mayor's pretty good to sit in, sit on that as well and get--
Seems the authorized individual.
That's right. Yeah. We're gonna try and, try and, uh, work on those lease terms and make sure that it's beneficial to both parties from get to go.
Well, not just the deal with the YMCA, but the whole overall project cost.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's part of scoping. That's a larger working group. This is a subgroup inside of the working group, um, getting through there. There was some concern about levels of, of, uh, operating costs that we may be looking at upfront in there. We just want to make sure we get a handle on that before we bring it back out and say, okay, this is where we are. We want to know where we, most of the dollars are coming from before we get to them. Okay, council, here we are.
Could you also give in the council, uh, updates as you go?
Oh, absolutely. Sure. Sure, for sure.
You know, and the financial stack, um, it's fluid right now. Uh, we've been waiting for months on any announcements on, on grants that we applied for, specifically Ready 2.0. Today, we got the announcement that, uh, we're going to receive five million dollars toward, toward this project. And with a fifteen-million-dollar fundraising campaign that the Y is going to contribute toward this project, that's twenty million dollars of this project. It gets to be where, you know, it, it's a lot less burden on the city to, to manage this project and get it, get it through. We're still going to do the right things, you know, the cost-effective things, but we're going to do it in a, in a good way. I don't want to build something that we're going to be embarrassed about, you know, three years from now and, and not build for the future. I think you gotta build for the future. That's what this is all about. Um, but, you know, the financial stack is fluid. There are components of that, whether it's, um, the food and beverage tax, you know, we still don't know what the capability of that is, collecting the first years, but, um, but it's been good. And, um, you know, we've got added funds that currently are, are, um, tagged for, for the cultural center, could be used in future years. We haven't agreed on anything. Okay? That's where council and, and this financial team have got to come together on how we're going to pay for it and finance it. Baker Tilly's done some studies on it, provided us some modeling, says, yeah, we can do this, but it's not, it's not against a ten-year plan, financial plan. And I think that's where Kirsten, and has brought it up, and I, I agree with her, that we need to lay it into that and see how it flows with us, because we've got the rest of the city to run.
And keeping in mind that this council has said we will not raise property taxes to make for this project.
This mayor has said that as well.
Pardon me?
So this mayor has said that as well, so.
That's good. And we're all in agreement on that.
That's right. Uh, so we're going to build what we can afford to build, but we're going to look at the resources we have available to us. I think that's, that's really critical.
And I'm confident Kremp Construction will do a fantastic job on this project.
Yeah. They're guaranteed to establish more.
They've been sitting here patiently.
Yeah, yeah. They had to sit through the whole meeting to get to this last item.
Do you, do you, do you want to address the council? Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, you want it.
No? You're good? All right.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm--
I, I would also, just one more thing. I would love to see a timeframe on this. Renee, you mentioned that this would happen, this would happen, this would happen. I would love to see that laid out in some kind of a time anticipated. I know everything doesn't go--
Right.
--as planned, but I would love to see that, that at this date, this would happen, this, 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 as things progress along the way, including when the expected amount of this project will be determined and how the payment of this project will be paid.
Sure. We actually, um, have started that process as well. Um, Haffer submitted to us a proposed, um, project timeline with input that they circulated to Kremp and, and to, um, the city. It just happened to come in right before I left for this conference, so, um, we'll hone in and fine-tune that and then, um, share it with everybody.
All right, thank you. I'd appreciate that.
And Nancy, I do appreciate your concerns about the, about the cost, and I will say that our department is looking, is examining it closely, and we will keep an eye on it, and we understand your concerns.
Thank you. And then in addition to that, hold your thought, Chad. I'm just curious, how much has already been spent on this project, like for Haffer?
I do have that information.
Obtaining the property, I don't know, Baker Tilly, if we have money spent to them, whoever, if, what type of cost we've already expended?
We have spent just under four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars on this project. Um, last year, the first payments were made, the, the first monies went out toward the project, and we've paid some this year. Um, we purchased the school property, um, we have paid Baker Tilly for some services, we have paid Haffer, Barnes and Thornburg, and Brosmer Surveying, and we also, um, paid Taft for some lobbying services.
Thank you.
Lobbying services? What was that?
For the food and beverage tax.
Oh, I see.
And we also have a million-dollar, um, help, we had a million-dollar help fund, help, help, the help fund that went to this help award, um, from our ARPA funds, and that's what we use to pay, um, pay for the school property, and then we have the remaining money to put towards a contract with, um, Haffer for engineering. Thank you.
I think it's, it's, it's worth a little, uh, public thank you, Paul, for your work on the working group, representing us. Kirsten, thanks for constant flow of good information. Thank you. As it relates to the resolution, um, section one, it, it is one thing, and it makes perfect sense to me to name the mayor as authorized individual, but, uh, I think specificity is important. What is, uh, who are the appropriate staff members? It says, "And the appropriate staff members of the city on behalf of the council." So is that to the discretion of the mayor?
Well, generally speaking, everything that gets signed gets signed by the mayor and Kirsten.
Okay.
So, um, they would be, the working group includes the mayor and Kirsten, myself, city engineer, um, parks director, um, parks, park board president, um, Paul Lorai, um, gosh, how many was that?
Steve.
Steve Leclaff from the school corporation.
Steve Wiegumire.
Mike Steffi from YMCA.
And Jeff Justice.
And Jeff Justice.
From the--
But legally, anything that, um, the mayor or Kirsten could need to sign, no one else is going to be able to sign that anyway.
Correct.
Okay. Um, that, that's the lesser of my, my, my concerns, but at, uh, section four, I found, I found it odd when it said, "The resolution shall not be repealed or amended," which is, which is new language from the original two, by the way.
Yeah.
I just now caught that. Uh, but also, "Council shall not adopt any ordinance or resolution that adversely affects this resolution." So once we pass the resolution, it can never be amended. That just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
Why does that have to be in there? That was on one of my questions also. Why that section four has to be in there?
It reads as an abrogation of our, of our duty to the taxpayer.
Well, the idea is that once you make the decision to allow us to go forward, um, with the scoping process, that you're not going to, halfway through the process, come back in and say, wait a minute, stop. You can no longer go through that scoping process, because now we're, we're entering an agreement with an outside party, and they're putting time and effort and resources into that. So that's, that's why it's there.
So can we put scoping process back into this?
Yeah, I have that. I have that listed. So my intention for section two is to add the section one from the original to negotiate, A, a scoping agreement with the developer, B, a final B O T agreement between the city and the developer for design, construction, operation, and transfer to the city of the B O T project, and then it is understood that the final B O T agreement, including the final guaranteed maximum price, shall be subject to approval by the council.
That, that makes sense. I mean, no one in business would want to get in business with someone who is that fickle, who's just going to back out at the last second like that. But suppose, suppose we get, um, you know, let's use our imagination, a, a significant cataclysm, a World War III and a Great Depression situation going, and then we have to cease. I mean, what, what are our, what are our alternatives? I mean, if we have that?
Well, if that case, that would, I, in my opinion, would fall under a force majeure, um, language in the scoping agreement that says that if there's an act of God or things like that, then neither party is obligated under the terms of the agreement. that, then neither party is obligated under the terms of the agreement.
So, we're covered, even with that language, you say, in that extreme instance? Okay, thank you.
So, one more question. So, let's say we pass this BOT agreement this evening, then is there--
You're not passing the BOT agreement.
Right.
We're passing this resolution.
Right.
And then, is a, an agreement also worked up between the city and Cremp Construction, naming them as the developer, or they BOT, they would be the BOT of this?
So, this, this resolution allows the city to enter into the scoping agreement, which is between the city and Cremp Construction. So, did that--
We've got a contract with Haffer for design--
Right.
--phase of it. This would allow us to sit down with these gentlemen and discuss what it's going to take to get us to that point before we come back. And again, I'm going to, quotation marks are hypothetical, April meeting when we come back in and say, okay, here's where we are, these are the numbers, this is how it's going to, how it would go forward. Hopefully, by that time, we have enough money, everybody's picking up change on the side of the street as they walk around, and, you know, throw it in, throw it in the can, but--
You're saying hypothetically, that would be the council meeting, that we'd come back with that dollar amount?
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
And method of payment.
And, well, yeah, that, that all is part of, part of what we're scoping in here, is there's, again, it's not just the building, it's not just the lease agreement, it's, it's how are we going to pay for it, it's--
Right.
--the whole project, coming back in front of us again.
In April, I would not anticipate us having a final guaranteed maximum price, because the longer that we can wait to establish that price, based on the plans that we're putting together, the closer Cremp is to understanding exactly what's in the project, so they don't have to, I, I may be misspeaking, but won't have to build in as much cushion for unforeseen circumstances. So, if they were going to try to create a guaranteed maximum price in April, before we've gone through that design process, they would have a lot more unknowns, and that price would have to have a lot more contingency in it. If we wait until, say, August or September, after we're fairly certain what the building is going to look like, then everybody can feel very comfortable with that guaranteed maximum price.
It's all, it's all based on percentages at this point in our meetings, and where are we at now? We're eight to 10% complete on design. Get into the scoping process, that allows us to get to, am I thinking right, was it thirty, thirty or forty? And then move into the sixty percent phase, where we get closer to getting the final number in that sixty percent realm.
I would say we'll be a little bit further along than sixty. I would say we'll be closer to, between eighty and ninety.
You know, this is, this, like I said, this is not something that we've done over and over again, so I appreciate the diligence on this. And, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to a great project, whatever we can afford, it'll be a great project. And right now, I know we can afford the money that has been committed to us. So, got to get the rest of the money in line, if, if we do the whole thing, which is what we applied for with the Ready Grant. And I want to be, we, we included everything on that Ready Grant when we went after it. It was the full project, it wasn't anything scaled back, so. I have a motion from Kevin, a second from John. Is there any further discussion?
With those changes that we've mentioned.
With those changes.
Yeah. It will make those changes.
I appreciate the discussion, because I really, I was going to vote no, but because of the discussion and the changes that were made, I feel, I feel much more comfortable.
Good.
Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, seeing if anybody's saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And thank you, Cremp, for instruction, for being a part of this.
Thanks very much.
At this point in time, is there anything else that needs to come before the council? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second it.
A second from Vince. All in favor, seeing if anybody's saying aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.